Okay, hello, welcome everyone. I'm going to, between Leo and I, we're going to be providing just some very quick updates ahead of our guest speaker who Leo will be introducing when we move on to him very shortly. I want to share at the current moment, I'm very happy to report and relieved that there are no current COVID outbreaks, no current consumers or staff that are experiencing COVID right now. So that's really great news. To date, we've had about 150 also employees who have been vaccinated. So certainly, that's really good news as well. We're very happy about that. You will see information coming out today that our next rapid screen, we did have to delay last week, but we are planning another session. That'll be this Wednesday in the afternoon at head office. So you will see some information coming out to the also email with some details about the rapid screen. And for any employee who's not currently experiencing any COVID symptoms, who hasn't previously been positive, and who is not working in a location that is deemed an outbreak. So it's a good tool. It's a screen. It's not a test, but it's certainly a good tool to help us continue to have these positive results that we're having right now in this moment. Well, I will be putting out some information. We do have, there is another PSW program that's going to be starting in May. For those staff that we may have that are interested in getting the PSW certification, if you do not currently have that, there will be some spots available. Right in this current moment, there is a course, PSW course that is happening. And we have two staff currently that are participating in that course. And again, opportunity coming up in May for others. So I will be putting out that information again today, so we can get a feeler of who may be interested in doing that with our frontline staff, and an opportunity to provide more information for them. That is my update. I'm going to pass it over to Leo.
Thanks, Tracy. So I don't have a great deal to talk about at the moment, but I just want to reaffirm for everyone, frontline staff, I know there was an email from Remy. I just want to confirm that as of this morning, there should have been a deposit to your bank catching up the late December and all of, or most of, I think all of January enhancement pay from the province, those monies came in. They've also assured us that they are now on track to continue to fund that enhancement on a regular basis on our bi-weekly payroll. So on March 26th, there will be a deposit covering the February enhancement pay, and on April 16th, there should be a payout for the March enhancement pay. So we are only too aware of how long it has dragged out from the time the premier originally announced this enhancement. It's still a great thing, and we're very, very happy that they are making these payments to our staff. And we're crossing our fingers that this is not just going to be temporary, and that there's recognition to make this permanent because of the importance of the work that PSWs and people that do the work like our staff do. So we're really glad to hear that. So I believe that's it for interim also updates. And what I want to do now is to introduce what I'm going to call our guest speaker, who is Beth Ann Turnivan. Beth Ann is the manager of counseling and employee assistance at Family Service, I always get this wrong, Family Service, EAP, I see Family Service Windsor Essex. And Beth Ann is here today to talk to all of you about self-care, and how we can get through this terrible pandemic until we see the day when things can return to normal. So Beth Ann has a number of slides that she's going to use in her presentation, and she'll share them. Probably going to be a little bit hard to see them on your mobile phones, but again, this whole session will be recorded, and you will be able to access it potentially on a PC as well afterwards. So that having been said, we thank Beth Ann for joining us today, and I'll turn it over to her.
Okay, thank you, Leo. Hello, Tracy. Hello, everyone on the line. Just a couple of points. There is a video within the content today, and so I have my volumes all the way up, both on the computer and my speakers here. And so with this particular speaker, his name is Dr. Herbert, and he does have an accent, and he's a little bit soft-spoken. And so if it comes across loud initially, just adjust your volume then to a comfortable level for yourself. I prefer that instead of not being able to hear it at all. And for those that are joining today, as Leo indicates, on a phone, it will be shared afterwards, so that you can look at it full screen at home. And I actually encourage you to do so. That is how valuable the content in the video is. So I'm going to begin sharing my screen. Leo, can you confirm that you can see that? Thumbs up? Okay, very good. Sorry?
Everything looks good.
All right, thank you. So who knew? Who knew, everyone, that a year ago, well, more than a year ago now, that we would be not only living through a pandemic in our community, but talking about it subsequently, and where are we going to go from here? What do we have to learn from the pandemic? And how do we go from here in terms of where we're at right now? What are the effects that the pandemic have had on us as employees and a community of your workplace at Assisted Living, within our community of Windsor Essex? So I would have loved to have had the opportunity to come and be with you again in person, as we discuss and understand from one another what we've been through as individuals, what you have been through as a workplace community, and what we have been through as a community, and why this is so important as we now begin to plan for our future. So in that regard, I'm going to talk a little bit about these areas here. What is this thing called collective trauma? As a collective, as a community within your workplace, and a community within our broader community, every single one of us have collectively been affected by the trauma of the pandemic. The importance of underscoring and understanding about how stress, anxiety, worry, fear, all the manifestations that fall under the category of this very important area, and how it can potentially manifest, and understanding that, that all roads lead back to the brain. And if we understand what's happening in our bodies as connected to our brain, we can have a better understanding of what our individual resilience and recovery will be. So when we think about collective trauma, this particular, there are many definitions, but this particular definition comes from, of all places, the Australian Red Cross. And it details how we've been feeling and impacted in so many ways. It is an event, and regardless of the type of hazard, but in this particular case, the hazard has been COVID-19, and it has been a worldwide hazard. And when it talks about the blow to the basic tissues of our social life, it means things like how we normally interact with one another, the tissues of how we interact with one another, how we work with one another, and in your particular case, how you have worked with the people that you are supporting in their daily life. The tissues include how we feed ourselves, how we have been able to continue to feed ourselves, and what that has looked at from the beginning of the pandemic onwards through to today. It means how we keep ourselves safe, the normal ways that we think about walking out our front door each morning. And now, when we walk out our front door each morning, the safety features that we have to bear in mind, and how those tissues have changed, how we pursue our education, or in this case, how your children have been pursuing their education. For those of you that have children at home, and whether they've, and what they've done in lockdown, and how they've managed to get through the virtual learning, and whether or not you've decided to send them to the school. So the tissues of how we normally pursue education, the tissues of how we've had to raise our children during a pandemic. And who would have ever thought that we would have been having these types of conversations? And we must never forget the tissues that existed in the families where they have lost their loved ones to the pandemic, countless hundreds of thousands of people across the world, and over 200 in our very own community, unless I've missed the count for today, as we watch each and every day, if there have been more people that, whose lives have been lost as a result of the pandemic. So it's also the tissues of how we care for each other, the people you support, your workplace community, and the elderly in our community, some of whom may be the elderly in your own family. And what can happen is it can bring damage to the bonds that attach people together, and impair our prevailing sense of community. So today, as we talk, as you talk with one another, you do a great deal to prevent the bonds from breaking, and to prevent a breakdown of a sense of community and compassion within your workplace. It is referred to, this type of trauma has been referred to as a rupture in meaning-making. And what we mean by this is the meaning that we attach to our lives, our sense of self, our view of others, and our view of the world. And the thing about trauma is its connection to stress, and the traumatic events that we have all been a part of in one way, shape, or form, and the importance of the effect of this trauma, this stress on our mind, our brain function. Because then it relates to the events in our lives on a deep and personal level. So a rupture in meaning-making. And we must do everything that we can to remember the pandemic, to remember the lessons that we have learned, and to determine what meaning will I bring to my life now because we have lived through the pandemic. And we've lived through a lot, and some of those experiences are here on the page. And if I could open up the microphone and talk to each and every one of you, I would hear, I would hear you articulate your own experiences. Maybe it's been the impact on your mental health, or the mental health of your loved ones, your children, your elderly parents, the mental health of the people you support. Maybe you have known somebody that has been in long-term care isolation, and have had to stand outside and simply wave to them from the window, and not be able to lay eyes on them face-to-face and hug them. Again, the experiences of which we've heard countless with virtual school, the lack of human connection that we've not been able to have with one another, people that have been worrying about the economy, and what's going to happen after all of these government expenditures, some of which have been absolutely essential in order to keep the tissues of our life together. The people who have lost a job, the people who have had their job status change from full-time to part-time, the number of businesses that have closed and have struggled to survive, and those businesses that have closed permanently. And you might know some of those people that have been affected in this way. People are tired. People are talking about pandemic fatigue. I don't want to do this anymore. People who are feeling compassion fatigue and vicarious trauma. The people on the front lines in direct healthcare in our hospitals who have had to make very difficult and painful decisions about who gets care because there has not been enough equipment, and the moral injury that has been felt. And across the board, I would suggest, we've had fear, worry, and anxiety to a greater or lesser extent about catching the virus. So lots and lots and lots of experiences, each one of you having an individual experience with regards to the pandemic, and we must remember. And so the importance of understanding that the stressors that have affected us, they don't just affect us physically. There is definitely an emotional reaction to all of these changes brought on by the pandemic. And I'm going to have Dr. Herbert explain that to you in great detail, because again, all roads lead back to our brain. And if we can understand what's happening in our brain and our central nervous system, then we're in a much better position to launch into or enhance that self-care. Okay? So stress, putting it sort of simply, is our body's response to something that makes us feel fear, worry, threatened, or pressured. It is caused by any kind of demand which forces us to adjust or respond. And we know that the demand of the pandemic has been a constant. It's like we haven't had a break. Now, part of our hope, our reservoir of hope, as I call it, is the acquisition and distribution of the vaccine, and being able to acquire the herd immunity, so that our levels of fear and anxiety about contracting the illness can begin to decrease, and our worry about the safety of our children, ourselves, our consumers, our friends, our loved ones, our neighbors, starts to decrease as well. But I will tell you that we have been in a longstanding holding position with respect to the implications of stress on our overall well-being, because we've been at it for so long. And the manifestations are individual, and it doesn't mean that we're all going to have all of these manifestations. And some of us may not have them at all. It just depends on our resiliency factors. But these can certainly be some of the manifestations that we can experience as a result of prolonged duration stress. And then we talk about it from a different standpoint. Burnout can happen to any one of us, whether individually in our personal lives or on the job. The depletion of our resources, we begin to feel depleted both psychologically and physiologically. And that's caused in the case of burnout by our desire to achieve certain standards and expectations. And our desires would be, let's have everything go back to the way that it was. Our desires would be, let's not have this pandemic in our lives in the first place, okay? Let's be able to do something about the pandemic. Well, up until now, we've not really been able to do something relative to the vaccines, other than all of our safety protocols, which we have all, for the most part, collectively become deeply, deeply committed to. But when we have standards and expectations, and we realize we can't possibly humanly achieve them, that's when we can continue into the sense of, I'm just overwhelmed with this. We really need the government to get going, and waiting, and waiting, and waiting for that. And finally, it's happened. And for some people, cynicism and pessimism, bitterness, anger, frustration has set in. All normal, and understandable, and typical, under these very set of abnormal circumstances that we have all fallen prey to. So here it is. When the demands, the multiple demands in our lives exceed our resources, we can end up feeling overloaded, overwhelmed, and then you add in everything with the pandemic, and it just can feel excessive. So as I mentioned, let's listen to Dr. Herbert. Again, I'm going to turn up my volume. Everybody turn up your volume so you can hear well. And again, if you can't hear well, we'll make sure to get this to you afterwards, and then adjust the volume once he gets going. He gets going right off the get-go.
People talk a lot about stress. But what does it actually mean? Stress is something that's very much personal to us, and we experience it in different ways. Stress is essentially when a situation, pressure, or change exceeds our coping abilities. Take a roller coaster ride, for example. You might have two people that go on a roller coaster together. One person may take a genuine enjoyment out of that experience. Other people might take a genuine sense of fear and anxiety. The roller coaster itself doesn't change, but our perceptions of it will differ. The same can be said for other stressful situations. Ultimately, it depends on your perception of that situation that determines whether or not you see it as a stressor. Of course, the roller coaster example is an example of short-term stress, which in isolation may not cause any harm whatsoever. It's only when stress accumulates beyond your coping abilities, and without adequate recovery, the stress can become a problem. Stress is likely to occur after an accumulation of life-changing events. Those events can be both positive and negative. They might include a business realignment, a promotion at work, or even something enjoyable such as a holiday or a Christmas break. What matters is there's a change to your normal routine. When a number of changes to your life happen within a short space of time, that's when it can have an impact on your resilience and your stress. We all know that stress can make us feel under pressure, agitated, and sometimes overwhelmed. The question is, how does stress affect our body and our mind, and what can we do about it? Within the body, you have the central nervous system, which is made up of the brain and the spinal cord. Within the central nervous system, you have the autonomic nervous system, which is regulating things that are outside of your control, things like blinking, breathing, and your heartbeat. Within the autonomic nervous system, you have two particular branches. One is the sympathetic nervous system. That one is the fight-or-flight system. The other is the parasympathetic nervous system. That is the rest and digest system. And although we interact with each other, they both have different modes. The sympathetic nervous system is responsible for increasing heart rate, increasing blood pressure, and increasing blood sugar to help you to perform when stress hits. The rest and digest system is responsible for suppressing heart rate and bringing it back down to what's known as homeostasis. DHEA is an immune system boosting hormone, which means it helps to stave off the development of lifestyle-related diseases. The problem here is that DHEA and cortisol are released from the same area of the body, the adrenal gland. This means that when someone is exposed to chronic stress, without the ability to recover and adapt to that stress, the DHEA is not being released. This means that the risk of disease is increased. Excess cortisol and chronic stress can increase the risk of strokes and heart attacks happening. The reason being is when cortisol is released, it creates an inflammatory response within the arterial lining. That inflammation could then lead to an increased cholesterol. If that cholesterol becomes unstable and breaks off and travels down to the smaller arteries of the heart or of the brain, that could result in the stroke or the heart attack. Stress can also have an effect on the way that your brain functions. Normally, when you experience a situation or a stimulus, it goes via the thalamus and then into the cerebral cortex, the outer part of the brain that's responsible for high-level thinking, such as strategy, executive decision-making, and creativity. The problem is when we're under stress, that whole system is bypassed, and it goes via the amygdala. The amygdala is very closely linked to your fight-or-flight response. Therefore, when you're under stress, the amygdala will result in your fight-or-flight response engaging more rapidly, and therefore you don't have the outer human thinking that you would normally have. As a result, you might act in a way that you would later regret. Now that we know a bit more about stress, the question is, what can we do to improve our resilience, to improve our ability to deal with pressure? When it comes to effective stress management, it's important to focus on the factors that were within your perceived control. One factor that's particularly useful to improve is sleep quality. Sleep deprivation can lead to increased activation of the amygdala, which is of course responsible for increasing the fight-or-flight reaction. By improving your sleep quality, you help to reduce the activation of the amygdala, which of course is linked to the fight-or-flight response. Furthermore, an improved sleep architecture can help to improve the regulation of cortisol. Low-to-moderate exercise can be very useful for stress management. Exercise is the place of focus on muscle tension and deep breathing, such as yoga, for example. They're very good because they drive up the activation of the parasympathetic nervous system, unlike high-intensity exercise, which drives with the activation of the fight-or-flight system. Therefore, going for a light-to-risk walk before bedtime can be a more effective stress relief than going for a high-intensity run. Furthermore, performing regular exercise can be a good distraction from the stressors in your life. There are other lifestyle factors to consider, too. Nicotine, caffeine, and alcohol are often used as de-stress techniques. However, they actually drive up the activation of the sympathetic nervous system, and in doing so, exacerbate stress more than they help it. Therefore, the casual cup of tea or the occasional glass of wine to help de-stress after a long day might not be as effective as we want to look. Taking these factors on board and modifying your behavior will help you to improve your ability to prepare for, react to, and recover from stresses in your life, ultimately improving your resilience.
Okay, so I just want to hold it there, and I really hope everybody heard that. And again, we'll make sure that you get that link. There are some absolutely key points that he's making, and especially, I have to say, relates to this prolonged duration stress that we've experienced during the pandemic. So stress accumulates, so the accumulation over time factor, the fact that when there's accumulation over a long period of time, that means we are faced with chronic stress, chronic stress. And what happens is the difficulty when it exceeds our ability to cope, exceeds our ability to cope. And how do we recognize it? We recognize it by how much anxiety that we are experiencing. If we're turning to sort of those maladaptive responses to cope that he's mentioning that are really not helpful for us. If our sleep architecture, our sleep hygiene has begun to be affected, recognizing what are the things in our routine and our daily life that we still indeed have control over. He also talked about stress happens when there is a change to our normal routine. Well, I don't know about you, but everybody that I've spoken to has had a change to their normal routine in our lives. Again, back to the normal tissues of life. He talked about the adrenal gland that sits on top of our kidneys, and that adrenal gland produces both cortisol, and it produces the DHEA immune system boosting hormone. Okay? So it's almost like I want you to be envisioning your adrenal glands and what they're pumping at any point in time of the day. So the importance to recognize the signals that our bodies are giving us. And finally, the importance that we have something that is innate to all of us, and that is our parasympathetic nervous system, which enables us to have rest and proper digestion. And we can invoke our parasympathetic nervous system through mindfulness, through proper breathing, and through allowing ourselves to settle and recalibrate several, several, several times each and every day. Okay? So again, lots of information, what is in our control, and to focus our abilities on the things that we can control in our daily life. There are many, many different definitions of resilience, and it's our ability to bounce back, if you will. And the funny thing is, it's not really funny, it's ironic about resilience, is that one of the things that strengthens our capacity for resilience is none other than adversity. So it's our ability to persevere. It's our ability to recognize, as Dr. Brené Brown talks about, let's not negate the challenges. Find somebody that is a trusted confidant, and you can tell them what your challenges have been, and know that they're not going to judge you, know that they're going to listen. It's important that we not negate the challenges in being able to articulate, understand. It's important that we not negate the challenges in being able to articulate, understand, be aware. And talk about what the challenges have been with a trusted confidant. It truly enables us to be able to continue to get through, to persevere, to bounce back. And there's no speed associated with this. It's our individual ability and everybody's resilience ability is totally different. So I want you to think about as you begin each day, as you end each day. What are you grateful for? Ask yourself these questions. What brings you joy? And from yesterday, when did you feel the most alive? And what are you most grateful for? In terms of your thoughts or behaviors that are not serving you well. Is your thinking catastrophic? You know, I'm not strong enough to handle this. You know, none of us are helpless in the face of adversity. It's a matter of figuring out what can help us to get through the adverse times. And set an intention each and every day. You know, for those of you that I've met in person, uh, in the training room, I've asked you before. What do you resonate with each day? What would people say are your signature strengths? And set an intention. What quality about you do you wish to connect with, with others today? Okay? At the end of the day, again, practicing gratitude. Consider three things each and every day that you are grateful for. And pause for 20 seconds as you're breathing and you're reflecting on. The gratitude and the things you're grateful for. And when you do that, we can take a breath in. For the people that are struggling to breathe because of COVID. And when we exhale, we can exhale with a reverence for the people who have not survived COVID. At the end of each and every day, acknowledge first to yourself if there was something about today that was difficult. And share it with somebody else. Create those tissues, keep those tissues of community and compassion going. And consider whether or not you or somebody else needs support. And remember, your EAP is here for you all the time, 24/7. I'll show the number at the end of the. Slides. You get the solutions newsletters, you get the promotional materials. It doesn't mean you have to even come for a long time. Maybe you just need one session to talk to somebody because now you're acknowledging what's difficult. You know, we talk a lot about self-care and do we actually do it? If you were to pick any one of the areas on this slide today. And follow through, self-care equals self-love. Self-care equals self-compassion. Look after your eating. Practice some form of mindfulness and if you do, do it five times a day. And if you do, you will invoke your parasympathetic nervous system. And bring yourself out of the realm of hyperarousal anxiety, back down into, he calls it homeostasis. I call it the window of tolerance, same thing. Okay? Where our, our central nervous system is, is allowed to calm down. Some form of physical activity, if you can't walk for 30 minutes, walk for 20. If you can't walk, do something in your house. Throw the yoga mat down and get down and do some yoga through a YouTube video. Doesn't matter, some form of physical activity. And in so doing, you're practicing self-compassion. Recognizing your strengths and giving your strengths as a gift to somebody else. And maybe during the pandemic, you have picked up the trumpet again, you have picked up your guitar. You've opened up your piano music. You've opened up the cookbook. You've looked in Pinterest and you're cooking something different or you're baking. And then you're bringing your baking to somebody who could benefit from your, from your baking. Maybe you have, uh, developed a number of different ways to be creative in your life. And maybe your children have. Maybe you've learned something new. One of these areas in here, do we commit to self-care? As opposed to just getting on the train, the train leaves the platform. And everybody else has been looked after, but you've neglected to put the oxygen mask on yourself first. So again, I don't care what form it takes. And your self-care regimen will be as individualistic as you are. Okay, figure out what restores you. Figure it out, what restores you? And apply it. You know, that, that fourth one down there, the sensory anchor, looking after our somatic needs. Those are those physical sensations that we get in our body. And it tells us something, if you've got a nervous stomach, if you're clenching your teeth. If you've got the pain across your shoulders or your lower back, that's your body's way of telling you. Look after me. And figure out if you need to reposition. Where you've got your fulcrum in your life situated. In order to bring about greater resiliency. Do you need to add in some further supports? Some further actions of self-care and adjust your fulcrum. We adjust our sails to, in order to keep ourselves buoyant. Okay, and sometimes the adjustments that we make can be minute. And sometimes those adjustments happen every day, all day, throughout the day. That's also part of our resiliency. Some further essentials. Bring out the best in others. Recognize your own reactions. If there is some bitterness there, if there is some irritation, if there is some anger. If there is some lack of patience. And that's a cue. Maybe I need to talk to somebody. Okay? We ensure our mental fitness before we help others. Incorporate closeness with people who support you. As opposed to avoiding. We can still incorporate closeness despite the need for the physical distancing. And I really like the one at the bottom. Is there somewhere in your life where there's a need to diminish so much intensity? Okay, and set some boundaries around that. It is in our community, our broader community, that we have found solutions to emerge stronger. Prevent further deaths, prevent further illness. And as a result, get through the adversity. You find solutions within your workplace community. You find solutions within your family community. And when the day comes, when you can all reassemble in person. Putting those solutions down, are your lessons learned? So that's how we ensure that the lessons from this pandemic are learned, that they're not lost. And it is a way for us to stay reverent to the people and the families that have not survived COVID-19. It is a way that we remain reverent to the fact that you have been on the front lines. You have remained essential during this entire time. And you've weathered this storm more so than anybody else because you've been on the front line. You've protected the people you support, you've protected their lives. So we must continue to talk about the lessons that we have learned. And ask yourself, what do you want to see retained from the lessons we've learned as we recover? And we re-emerge. What do you want to see retained? And what meaning have you found in your life as a result of the pandemic? This is really important in terms of our recovery. We have to talk about what meaning this pandemic has brought to our life. Or what greater meaning has now been illuminated in your life because of the pandemic. If you need us, we are here. We'll be here to help you. If not today, tomorrow, next month, six months from now. We'll be here. Are there any questions in the chat, Leo?
Uh, no, I'm not seeing anything right now, Beth Ann. I get the impression we had a lot of staff that could not participate live, probably because they're either working. Or at home, but, uh, there will be a great deal more exposure possible through the recording. And no, I don't see any questions right now.
Okay.
So that being said, I want to thank you, Beth Ann, for an excellent presentation. I want to clap, I'm, I'm looking for it in the reactions, there it is. I think that was an absolutely excellent presentation. Many, many important, useful takeaways there. I know the reminders for me are profound. Even something like how easy it is for us to wallow in, uh, thinking that we're alone at so many different times going through this. When in fact, the reminder that it's a shared experience for all of us on so many levels. And in so many different ways every day, that is just crucial. Very, very, very eye-opening for me certainly and, and I'm sure for others as well. I have, I have the strongest sensation that everybody listening and watching. Uh, place themselves in different spots in your presentation without any doubt. So I want to thank you deeply, uh, very, very good presentation. We're going to wrap it up, but as I said, we will make this available at the very least on our server. And I believe there's probably a way that we can upload this perhaps to YouTube with your permission, Beth Ann. Um, where staff could log in because it's sometimes difficult for them. I know they can't get to our server from their, uh, their home computers and internet. So is that okay with you if we do that?
Yes, it's fine, absolutely. I'm just responding in the chat and, um. Let me know when you do play the recording that, that it enables the video to play just perfectly as well.
I'll do that test, thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome, everyone. Take care, be well.
Thanks, Beth Ann, you too. And have a good sunny afternoon, everybody. Take care.